States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chairmen's for approval of the agenda is our second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements, Facility Committee meeting on May 8th, right here in this room at 7:00 AM. Graduation is May 29th at 6:00 PM at Hodor, at our field. Cross your fingers that we get the weather for that. Thanks Brian and Dave for stepping up to do that that night. Finance Committee meeting is May 30th at 7:30 AM via Zoom. And the next regular board meeting is June 10th, 6:00 PM, right here. At this time, do we have anybody who wishes public comments to address the board?
Yes, I would.
Okay, could you please state your name? And we ask people to try to keep it to, you know, three, four minutes at the Ken, please.
My name is Jerry. Somebody know me. Try to stick to this so that there's no motion in it. Is it okay if I speak here?
Absolutely.
Okay. I got scolded last week for sharing a thought with a teacher. First, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. So I really want to make it clear that I have always appreciated the teachers that my children have had over the years. There's a plethora of amazing teachers, staff, et cetera. I haven't always stated that, usually I'm a little more to the point. But tonight I'm here because we're talking about graduation. You are going to approve the list of graduates. I asked for that list and it says it's attached, but I didn't see it. But I have a few things that I'd like to acknowledge. And I know I have never been well received, but that's neither fear nor dare. On this list is my oldest son. He's receiving his diploma this year, two years late. Because of the many challenges we've had here at West Tonka. He is a straight H student, highly gifted, just so Ralph knows that is documented, who faced challenges, not necessarily with the material, but his relationship with school. Due to just a few teachers and some administrators who made decisions and choices that caused a great amount of harm with lasting consequences. To the point where we pulled him from school right before COVID because we were so frustrated that he wasn't getting the help he needed. I was at the pharmacy today and they have cards out for teachers. And this one says, "The influence of a good teacher can never be erased. So too the influence of a bad teacher cannot be easily erased." And it wasn't even the teacher's ability to teach, but the choice he made to humiliate a student the first week of school as an 11-year-old coming into a new school. And this was the start of his struggles, which in my mind, this action was okay by administration and wasn't felt it was wrong. We spent a lot of money and time to correct this harm. He won't walk at graduation. I don't get to sit in the stands to see my son walk across that stage because he's not with his classmates, which should have been 2020. Because as a teenager, who wants to walk with strangers across the stage? The last two years he's been doing PSEO around Monmouth, so he doesn't know any of the students. So as you can imagine, as a mother, it's devastating. He will receive this diploma that he earned, not because of West Tonka's high success rate, but in spite of the choices made by those teachers and administrators at that time. But he is the one who fought to overcome these challenges and made the choice to return to West Tonka to finish his schooling. Because as he said, "I started there and might as well finish there." There are a few people that I want to thank, especially these last two years, who really made it work for him and helped him successfully get to where he's at. Although he has lost these two years. I'd like to thank Dr. Emily Rusman, Mrs. Lisa Bonk, an outside gifted learner coach we had to hire, Tina Van Erp. And I'd also like to give credit to his dad and me. Because we educated ourselves, fighting for what he deserved, regardless of being told we are the problem. So this, to this amazing boy who had to fight against all odds and adults who should have been there for them, some of them, and weren't. He did this. He's graduated. And this will be the only acknowledgement he'll get outside of family.
We'll move on to the student rep report, not tonight. If there's somebody. Then we'll move on to treasurer's report.
Not tonight.
Although I will say that I did look at the check ledger, everything is in order.
Thank you. And then are there any committee reports from anybody? And then teaching and learning.
So tonight I have a few items to share with you tonight, some good news to share. And as you know, as we get into the month of May, it is testing season on many fronts. And I'm happy to say that we have finished our state testing. There were about 1,400 students that were tested in grades three through eight and 10 and 11. Results will come back in August. And just to give you just a sense of the volume of testing that we do, just at the high school, it was 126 different testing sessions that we had to organize. And what I do appreciate is that state testing is our community's accountability to what we do here in our classrooms and our student learning. And again, when I was around different classrooms, students were taken very seriously. Teachers were focused. We had all protocols and procedures done well by staff. And I really congratulate our schools, job well done. And again, unfortunately, we had to wait till August to get results. But job well done, another successful year of testing.
Martell?
Yes. Quick question. So my kids are in fourth and, no, third and 10th. And they got their results back already, is that true?
It is very true.
So, but we have to wait for them to be aggregated?
They receive the preliminary results.
Got it.
The informal results.
Okay.
And certainly those, for the most part, are accurate on an individual level. But yes, the state does need to formally process this aggregate. There's a lot of steps involved to release the public-facing results. But for families, you are correct.
Okay.
You have the informal preliminary results.
Got it.
The other pieces that are going on in the month of May is we have our FANS bridge assessments. Those are our local district standardized testing that we do in the fall and the spring. And we like to measure student growth with those in reading and math. And then starting today is our advanced placement testing. And I just wanted to list for you the 12 different assessments that we do in advanced placement. And that has started today and goes through the next couple of weeks. And those are assessments that can earn college credit. And if anything, the credit can be exciting for students. But just experiencing the rigor of a college course in itself is very meaningful for students that take AP courses. So we'll be wrapping that up. And then results come out sometime into June, early July on that. So that's that piece there. Also want to just give you, just a few, couple of updates in the TNL realm. We've just finished embedding our 2020, we call them the new 2020 ELA standards from the state. Pandemic still has its residual effects. But we just finished now the high school, middle school. I'll be working with elementary staff on their replacement. Because in the spring of 2026, the MCA4 reading test comes out. That'll be the new MCA4 in 2026. It'll align to these new academic standards. So we do take this very seriously. We look at the strengths, we look at our gaps in our curriculum, and we make sure that we're hitting these new academic standards. Nothing really radical about the new ELA standards. But again, we go through our processes to do that. And then moving on from there, I talked with you about the READ Act and the required professional development. And I'm here to share with you that first arrow below the chart, we are ready to go with what is called CORE. That's one of the entities that's providing training. And we are starting the elementary cohort in a couple of weeks. The materials have arrived. And then the secondary cohort will start in mid-June. This will be a year-long professional development endeavor for our staff. There's also something, the second arrow called letters. And then letters, early childhood. You can see the number of hours that are required for this PD. And I give a lot of credit to our staff, that they're taking it seriously. We're figuring out ways to build this into their day, into their year. And I don't have any updates for you for the letters and early childhood letters. We're waiting on the state to give us the details so we can submit our rosters of staff. But this is happening across the state. And if you tune into MSBA updates, I know on May 16th, they're going to be doing a webinar for MSBA members talking about READ Act 2.0. And that's maybe something, if you're available, to tune into that. And that is what is happening at the legislature right now. They're talking about this, they're talking about other aspects, and how they're going to make some amendments. We'll see, you know, end of May, exactly what happens. But May 16th, 1 o'clock, there'll be a webinar. Just check the May newsletter for MSBA. All right, I just want to end with just some, just really nice things that have been happening with our students. And the first one I wanted to share with you, April 26th was the Minnesota State High School, the Visual Arts Festival. And every year, it seems that we have great representation by our Montauk High School art teachers, art students rather. And this year, there was 250 pieces of art that were submitted. The high school had 18 entries, 11 of them had superior awards, and there were five awards of excellence. And I just give you just a few samples of, this is student creations. And, you know, I just look at, I couldn't do that myself. I'd probably buy something for my house if I saw that at a gallery. But I have the full presentation linked in here. But it gives you a taste of the quality of work that these students, that this is their gift. This is their skills that they can do. So again, they did, it was just a very successful representation of the high school back on April 26th. And just want to, they, Jam Perar and Erica Boils are two art teachers at the high school that are really leading this group of students. And it's just, we're just doing really. And you've heard a lot about DECA. And DECA has gone to their International Career Development Conference competition in Anaheim, California. And again, just really excited that we had a record 40 students attend DECA. And to give you just a little taste of what this is, it's different aspects of business and different events. And this is just a listing of all the different events where our students are competing. So just think of all these different aspects of a business and becoming an expert in that. So they went to Anaheim and these different students are competing in these different events. And what's really exciting is that there's about 23,000 students competing. And just to kind of scroll through these, each event, and I bolded and highlighted it or underlined it, what they were competing in, has between 200 and 250 teams competing. So this first one, we hit a top 20 in career development chapter project. A 10th place finish in virtual business challenge. And again, you're going to recognize some of these students that are involved with these competitions. A 10th place finish in the virtual business challenge focused on hotel. 8th place finish, Community Awareness Chapter Project focusing on the B-Log, B-Log Topi project that we have here in town. And a 1st place finish, think of that, internationals, 250 teams competing. And this was in the Business Solutions Chapter. And it was focused on, we know about Eli Hart and the playground and that whole, you know, program that we developed. So truly exciting. And if anything, these are future leaders. These are future entrepreneurs. These are future students that will be probably going into business. And they're getting a taste right now as to what it means. From just the actual problem-solving collaboration, but even the dress and the presentation that you need and the communication pieces. So congratulations to them for that. And of course, I can't not talk about the Talk-A-Bots. That's kind of been a theme. It's been a very, very special year this year. And they were down at Houston, Texas for Worlds in mid-April. And with 600 teams down there from 16 countries, 48 states. And I talked to Dory, Nina, our HR director, and she had bumped into a team from Hungary. Now, I don't know what it costs money-wise to get a team from Hungary over here to Houston. But there was a number of teams from international places that had competed. What this picture is, is the Talk-A-Bots are at the Houston Convention Center. And it's eight full playing fields. And you can see the big panels up in the ceiling displaying all the way down a quarter mile. Just this massive environment. And you know what? It doesn't faze them, doesn't faze them at all. They just get in there and they're doing their thing. After internationals, they were ranked 7th out of 188 Minnesota teams, 145th out of 2,000, almost 2,800 US teams, and 168 worldwide out of about 3,500 teams. Congratulations to them for that. And then it doesn't stop. Because then from there, we go into Saturday, two days ago, the Minnesota State High School League State Robotics Competition. It was at Williams Arena. And here we have the robot on the right, the competition field. You see that flag they fly before the competition for the Talk-A-Bots. And there was the top 38 robotics teams in Minnesota were competing. And what is absolutely amazing, Talk-A-Bots were state champions. And they took the whole thing. And what is really heartwarming to me, there's the trophy on the left. And that picture on the right, it says it all. There's Dale Kimball, our advisor. And he's congratulating Toby Fleener, the main driver of the robot. And you can just see in his eyes, job well done, job well done. And again, it has been a very special year with this team. I think they're exhausted. And maybe 10 of them actually got to prom too Saturday night with seniors that are on the team. And it has just been a great ride this year for them. And we sure appreciate your support. And the businesses in the community that have come out to support this team has made a world of difference for this group of students. So it's a nice way to end their season. So that's the report.
You know, it's hard to believe it's all winding down. It's all by you. Thank you. Kathy?
Any state championships in the financial?
No, obviously in probably a few months, I'll let you know if we're state champions.
We're always state champions. Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, my reports never is exciting. So I try to think of ways to jazz it up, but it just doesn't happen. Anyway, good evening, Board. I have a brief financial report for you tonight. Mark talked about winding down the school year. And this is the time of the year where we're busy winding down. And at the same time, we're busy winding up for next school year. So we'll talk about winding down here. You can see again, the chart is filling up with enrollment. We are up six students over the prior month, which we expected. And again, just, this is going to close out my report because the next time we'll be reporting enrollment, we'll be reporting actials for the whole year. And again, these are just a snapshot on the first of each month. And again, I can't express how pleased I am of the stability of enrollment. It's been just very, very minor all year long. And so it makes for great projections. And again, very pleased with that for the school year and looking forward to what next school year will bring. Revenue and expenses through the end of April. You can see through the end of April, we have received $25,211,000 or 65.5% of our revised budget, which is trending very similar to the prior years. Again, the only other variance is our COVID funds, which again, those are not comparing apples to apples because those are pretty much off our budget the last year or two. And expenses through the end of April show that we have expended 38, or excuse me, $28,987,000 or 74.5%. So again, this is information through the end of April and the end of the fiscal year is coming. And so with that being said, after we wind down through June 30th, we'll immediately start working on, next fiscal year, we're busy working on the audit now. We'll be presenting that to you on June 10th. We are working hard now on getting property and liability. A lot of construction costs are higher. So we're working on other quotes and trying to keep the cost under control as much as we can. And everything we have going on, again, whether it's winding down or winding up, our School Board Finance Committee meeting will meet on May 30th prior to the next board meeting. And we'll recap all of that in greater detail. Any questions?
I was looking at the report on the first page there, if you can. On the upper left, the percentages, if you look at state, federal, you know, property tax, et cetera, et cetera. And you have on the, on your highlighted yellow, the single bar yellow. You go up, federal is, most of it looks like it's like three quarters, two-thirds to three-quarters, which would be normal for the school year. In other words, they're doling it out as the school year progresses, right? But the federal government shows like a fair, you know, just barely under 50%. Is that normal? Do they make it a whole year? Or do they go for the nine-month school year? Is that, so they have, there is calendar day to calendar day for a whole year?
Yeah, that's a really great question. The state leaders the payments to us on a fairly even schedule. We get 90% of the money in the current year and then they hold back 10%. And then, you know, property tax is different. You know, when people pay their property taxes, you know, like at your home, you pay May 15th and I think it's November 15th. And so we get surges of property taxes. And then the state holds off during that time. But the federal is small enough and we have to actually, you know, submit claims. And we draw off of actual expenses. So each platform of, or each category of revenue has different meterings. And so it's based on, based on when you draw. So when we had millions of dollars of COVID funds, I was drawing every month because it was substantial. And typically outside of COVID, you, they recommend for districts to draw quarterly. So again, then that can, you know, fluctuate your percentage.
So the Fed kind of looks at everybody else's and then say, okay, this is what we're going to put in. So it's normal to get what you expect to get, it's just at a different.
Different rates. Yep, exactly. Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Well, it's spring and there's a lot of ceremony and different programs going on. Primary students are gearing up for Wolf Ridge. We have a lot of sports that are taking place, as you see today. The softball is going on and lacrosse is going on. Our track team is out. And hence, we don't have student reps here talking to you today because I think two are at a track meet and another one, I believe, is in lacrosse. So, but really thankful with all the rain that we've had, that we've been able to get a lot of the activities in. Thankful for the board and the community support when we did things like baseball field. We put some infield drainage in it and it's really working well. We're able to get the kids on the field. Takes a little bit of work by the grounds crew and they're doing a nice job trying to keep us going. But it's been a wet spring so far, but really been able to get a lot of things, a lot of things in. As I've been sending emails out to community and parents, one of our big efforts obviously is working through the designing of our facility project. And so we have our tennis courts and our primary security happening this summer. And we continue to take steps with the contractors that we receive bids from about implementing those changes. We feel like things so far continue to pace as they should. And so we'll be having our beginning meetings with these contractors onsite end of May. And we'll continue those obviously through the summer. And then for the tennis courts through the beginning of the fall. But really thankful to have the enhanced security improvements of lockdown capability, door monitoring, hardened glass, having that kind of security for our kids. We're going to have an improvement with security cameras at those areas. Excited for those changes. Also excited for the possibility of improving not just the maintenance that's required of the tennis courts, but actually going from nine to 12. Those will be well received. And as tennis is the primary focus for students, we're also putting pickleball on those. And the pickleball community feedback that we've gotten has really been positive. So appreciate the community support, the board's support of those projects. We're really busy with design work with Grantview Middle School, where we're bringing the office for the entrance and some work with special ed and our media center in that space. And then also at the high school. And so we've had multiple design group meetings. And then we've had what we call our user group meetings. And user group meetings are people that are connected to specific spaces to review how those designs are working. We'll continue to work through this through the summer. We hope to be out to bid, well, we will be out to bid on these projects come fall. And so right now, everything's moving along. It's a lot and it's an exciting lot. And really feel thankful for the projects that we're looking at. Would share also the branding effort that we're taking a look at. That continues to move forward and we hope to have that concluded here in July. And so we continue to take steps with that. In your action items today, you have a couple HR items. We have two more individual contracts. You approved the bulk of those at this meeting, but these are two newer hires with our technology department. We have a position that was under the category of an SSE that got switched to an EOE and how the position changed. And so we work with those unions and proposing the final action now to move it from one bargaining group to another where it's more correctly identified. And then lastly, with some of our IT equipment, when we retire it, it still has value. And so we have to go through a board action for you to show that we are going to be selling this. And so that's our process on that last action item. We're coming up here in the last month of school. And so a lot of work to finish strong here with the. And so a lot of work to finish strong here with the final, final weeks. And then as we enter in the summer, we will be having a very active adventure club class. And so we got high numbers for that. We'll be doing a summer school and ESY. And then obviously, all of our camps will be going on. But it'll be a full load this summer. One thing that we're preparing for is when we get to the next summer, both Grandview and the high school, we have to find different places or how we're going to operate with some of these programs. And so right now, we're trying to figure out timing, what's impacted, how we can place things. But it's one thing that we've already been given some thought to of how we can work with that program. Because a lot, a lot of things happen over at the high school and we want to make sure that opportunities continue to exist for the kids.
Chair moves for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Move on to discussion items. Chair moves for approval of action item 7A, approval of individual contracts. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Chair moves for approval of action item 7B, approval of the elimination of GMS General Office per professional positions SFC and the addition of Grandview Middle School Administrative EOE position. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? And the chair moves for approval of action item 7C, approval of the retired IT hardware to be sold and recycled. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't know how to handle this, but only A, B, C. All right. Be careful what you wish for, Dori.
I know. Well, I know it's coming back around. So if there are no other topics, the chair calls for adjournment of the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?